Workshop of the Florisville City Council to order, call this meeting to order at 6:17. Please join me in our invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this food provided, we thank you for the blessings of Sylvia and her husband. May you be with their family in this time of stress and need of comfort. May you lift up the mom and dad to beat. Father, we give you tonight's meeting. Help us to take all this information and do the best for the city of Florisville. We ask your blessings on so many, Father, and we're just grateful that you take all of our prayer concerns and you lift them up. Thank you. We come to you in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Let's stand for the flag. Do you have a flag in here?
What's your doggy?
Four six two one.
Do we have to go out to the main room or do the flag?
Whatever you want.
I'll tell you what, for this meeting, we'll do away with it just because they're not in this room.
Sure.
We do have a forum for tonight's meeting. We have Councilwoman Jimenez, Councilwoman Goller, Councilwoman Viera. Thank you guys for being here. Any citizens' comments? I'll give them a moment. Okay. Because there is none? We'll start with our presentation discussion. City of Florisville Code of Ordinance, ordinance 280, chapter 31, City Official Emphasis on Section 31.22, Standards of Conduct, Conduct, Complaint Process, Hearing Process, Sanctions and Violations, and Distribution of Compliance. Our city attorney and her staff have worked very hard on this, so I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Ray.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, and Council. I thought that we needed to go over the standards of conduct. It's something that's been in fact, that has been put in effect since 2011. It might mean some modifications, but those are the rules that the council has to abide by. So I thought it would be a really good idea for us to have a workshop and go over it, page by page, because there's going to be a test at the end.
I hope it's multiple choice.
So be prepared. But I think that it's something that we are facing. We're also going to discuss about the complaint process and the preliminary process, the preliminary hearing process, and also sanctions and stuff of that nature. And unfortunately, this is something that we're going to have to become familiar with because it is in existence and because now we have some possible pending complaints that are going to be coming before this honorable council. So before those complaints are heard, I thought that it would be a really good idea to go over the standards of conduct and then to see what are the standards, what are the procedures that you have to follow in order for your complaint to be able to go forward. And this is something we're having to learn, and I hope that we don't learn it very well. And what do I mean by that? Well, I'm hoping that we don't have to go through this complaint process very, very often because I sincerely believe that each and every one of you are here for the right reason because you love the city of Florisville and that your number one interest is what is in the best interest of the citizens of Florisville and how can we make that happen? So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and let's go over the standards of conduct. Okay? I think that there are some issues that really, really need to be covered, and we're going to go over each and every one of them. And I hope I don't bore you guys, but y'all continue to eat. I'm going to just read it to you because I think it's important that you hear it.
Is this with changes to it or is this what's currently in place?
This is what's currently in place, Mayor, and I would ask for you to take notes, if you can, please, and decide if you want to make some different changes because I think this is something that was developed in 2011, and it might be something that you need to make changes. And I think you and I have spoken about that, and we'll get to that in a little bit, Mayor, because I think that's a change that should be done. But of course, the council, you make the rules, and it's up to you. I can only make suggestions, but then afterwards you guys can put it in place if that's something that you so deserve. Okay? So on number one, I'm going to, what I'm going to do is just real quickly, I'm going to go over 3122. I'm going to go through all the way up to number 11, and then after that, I'm going to skip down because I want to go down to the complete process, and then after that, we're going to skip down a little bit, and then we'll get to some juicy stuff towards the end, if that's okay. Okay, so number one, and if you have any questions, please stop me and ask, and I'll answer them as best as possible, but be sure and also write on the side if you want, write your notes, put your notes and what changes you want to make in regards to that paragraph or that sub-number or, you know, subletter because those are things that we can bring back, and then you as a council can make those changes. Like I said, this one is since 2011, so that's been a while. Okay? So number one, it says, "No city officials may disclose any confidential information gained through the official's position controlling property, operations, policies, or affairs of the city for gain or advantage in an economic interest of the city official or the persons identified in subsection C to B of this section." Now, city officials, that is you. That designates, if you will go through another part of our Code of Ordinance, it indicates who is the city official. The definition is city council. City council is the city official. Members of the boards or committees that you put on there are considered city officials. Even the city attorney is considered a city official pursuant to the ordinance.
They're not the board members.
Yes, that's right. Number two, no city official may use the official's position or city-owned facilities, equipment, supplies, or resources of the city for gain in an economic interest of the city official, for political campaign of their official, or for any other persons identified against subsection C to B of this section. Again, just telling you, city-owned equipment, facilities, or not to be used by a city official for their own personal gain. Okay? Three, except as specifically authorized by city ordinance, no city council member may appear before the city council to represent the city official or any person identified in section C to B of this section. Other city officials should not appear before the board of which they are a member. The exception to this section is if the city official is representing the city's official-owner occupied homestead before a city body. The city official may designate and be represented by a person of the official's choice in any such matter other than someone related within the second degree of consequentiary of affinity. Okay? Basically, you cannot come in and represent other interests and stuff again, looking for personal gain and stuff of that nature. Okay?
Regarding your personal property?
Yes. No city official may act as surety for any person or business entity that has a contract with the city or as a surety on any bond required by the city for a city official. Well, I don't think any city official or none at this table I know for sure is going to say, hey, I'm going to go ahead and go put my name to that bond for you or anything like that. It would be craziness, and I would definitely tell you, don't do it. Okay, number five, city officials shall respect and adhere to city council, to council, excuse me, it says, "To the council manager structure of the city government is provided in state law and the city charter, recognizing that the manager shall manage city employees, and the council shall set policy and provide budgetary guidance direction." That once again is telling you that you have a city charter that you're going to adhere to, and if you are aware, it does tell you in there that we're not supposed to interfere with any decisions or any appointments and stuff of that nature, that Mr. Dawson is supposed to be in charge of that. And that's in our city charter, and it's telling you that you're going to respect it and you're going to adhere to them. Okay? Any questions on that?
So everything we're going over is going to pertain to board members as well, right?
To board members, committee members as well, yes, because our definitions of city officials contain those individuals in that definition.
So it's anybody that has a contract with the city or under the city, on a board, not on a board, like even you part of them?
Yes, if, yes. Even I on there, I was kind of shocked when I read it years ago that they even included the city attorney as the city official because I'm like, hey, wait a minute. But it is, it's in the definitions in center. Okay? Number six, city officials excluding the city attorney shall not attend internal staff meetings or meetings between city staff and third parties unless invited by city staff or directed by the city council. That means if there's meetings that are going to be done with employees, we're not supposed to be there unless Mr. Dawson or Monica, someone that's in charge will say, hey, come join, come in, and I want you to sit in on this meeting. Or unless it's something that the city council has said, hey, I want to make sure that one of us is there and keeping an eye out for the city council, so we ask you to be there as a representative. Okay? Any questions? No? Okay. City officials shall refrain from abusive conduct, actions, and language, and shall not knowingly make a false statement of material fact relating to the character or motives of other members of the city council, boards, commissions, committees, city staff, or the public. Now, this is really, really important because this is where we have to respect each other's decisions. We might not like each other sometimes, we might not like the decisions that other people are doing, but it does specifically tell you, hey, whether you like it or not, you cannot use any kind of abusive conduct, action, or language. You have to refrain yourself and just take a deep breath and not use that because that is something that could easily be violated. Okay? Number eight, city officials shall make all reasonable efforts to attend unproperly noticed public meetings where their attendance is required by state law or the city charter. Once again, you know when your agenda is posted, you know when your meetings are, you know workshops and stuff of that nature. Monica's really good. She calls you and she reminds you and tells you, hey, don't forget, and I value that because I have a terrible memory sometimes, and she'll remember where I'm supposed to be at. So you're basically telling them, hey, I know that there's public meetings that are going to be noticed of it because there's going to be an agenda, and I'm going to make all reasonable efforts to attend those. Number nine, non-elected city officials addressing the city council or any other city board or commission is members of the general public or the public comment section, public hearing section, or any other time during which public comments are taken during any open meeting, shall identify themselves by name and disposal positions with the city and their financial intricity in this matter. And I think that we've done really, really good about this because I'll never forget, and I'm going to mention him because the first time that I came to a meeting, I heard one individual that was also on a board, and I remember here Frank Itzall's FEDC, and I'll never forget that, you know? But you guys, as a board, as a council, have done really, really well because I know, Mayor, that if someone forgets, you will ask them to please identify themselves, and that is part of your ordinance. So I thought that was really, really impressive, but then he got mad at everybody, and I never forgot that either. I said, I got to write down his name. So, but you're doing good, and I think that's a good thing, and I think that you need to maintain that and keep that. Number 10, a person related to the mayor or a member of the city council within the first degree of consequentiary affinity shall not be eligible for appointment to nor service upon any city board, committee, or commission. Basically, your husband, your child, those are your first degree of affinity, and because they are that and that's how close they are, you cannot name them and say, hey, I want to make you a member of a board or a committee. Okay? But that also, I think, is a good idea. Number 11.
Cousins or relatives.
Yeah, then, well, the further down that you get down the list, Mayor, and it's no longer a first degree, then it's okay, you know? It's okay, as long, like I said, as long as it's not your husband or your daughter, then you don't run into any problems.
So it only applies to boards and committees, not to council positions?
Yes, exactly. And that's how you have it on that.
So if my mom ever gets that, like she wants to come back and all this stuff, and she's elected by?
She can run, so.
Unfortunately, unless you, okay, wait, wait, unless you make a change to this ordinance, so that might be a note that you want to put on that number and say question mark. But right now, yes.
Which brings to mind, you wouldn't want a husband and wife to be on it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't want sisters or brothers.
Or brothers.
So there might be a change that might be made.
Yeah, so you might put something on that, Mayor, because I think that that is a possibility and not just for it. Yeah.
You're so bad.
I don't really question them because I'm related.
Right now, it is a possibility, and it can happen unless you make that change to number 10.
Some of us are related to thousands of people here, right? So, and I know it's just first, you know, first, but that's, like, I can't appoint anybody who is first to any member, right? Not just myself.
Yes, you do not want to appoint your sister.
Like, I couldn't appoint her sister.
You cannot appoint her sister because then she's going to have an issue because it's her sister.
Got it.
Okay? But you can appoint the cousin, okay? Or the second cousin, you can appoint those. Okay?
So that might be, that might be a change that we could make to it if the council chooses because that can cause.
I think we should put a note on number 10 because that is a possibility that you could have a husband and wife, or you could have a mom and son, you know? You could have that, Mayor.
Two sisters who might support each other.
Yeah. Now, that would be interesting.
Talking about first degree.
Yes, specifically talking about first degree, and that could cause problems, you know? So keep that in mind, but that's number 10, okay? Number 11, it says, "Any person who serves on any city board, committee, or commission on the effective date of the ordinance from which this subchapter is derived and who is related to the mayor or a member of the city council shall immediately give notice of such relationship. The council shall take notice if the position is open and appoint replacements not later than 30 days upon the seeing of such notice." Meaning, if that does happen, because unfortunately, nobody's perfect and something happens sometimes, then that's the action that would need to be taken. They would have to be advised of that. Let's say Monica finds out Terry, your sister or your brother, is on this committee, and she finds that out. Well, then she has to bring it to the attention of the city council so that you guys won't have to replace that individual. And as you know, you can always replace any member on any board. It does not have to be for Josh's cause. You can do it at any time.
So what happens when somebody has already been appointed to a board, but then a newly-elected council member comes in and they have a sister or a brother on the board?
Yes, that's a very good question because this ordinance doesn't cover that. It doesn't say, oh, if you're already previously appointed, it will not affect you. So that might be something that you might add. That's a really good question, yeah, because you would think that you would be grandfathered in, and it wouldn't affect you, but the way that it's basically is, well, you're going to immediately give notice of the relationship, and then they're going to throw you out. So I think that that's another one, Mayor, that you might want to make some changes on.
And if it's related to a board, you know, people being appointed or whatever, then if they have any relationship with the city council member or the city manager or whatever, then they should report it prior to them being appointed.
Yeah, and right now, your ordinance, basically, it deals with first degree, you know? So anybody of immediate is where it needs to get reported. Okay? And then you guys, that will give you the 30-day notice, gives you an ample opportunity to take in applications. Yeah, it's going to be quickly, but you'll have to take applications and then discuss them and then vote on who you're going to replace out.
But I think that on the question, Mayor, whatever they should say, we have any first or second layer.
And I don't know if that's in there. Do you know, Monica?
On the application for council position, it is not on there.
Okay.
On the board application, it does ask.
Excellent, excellent. So good. We do need to have that so that we don't run into that you're violating your own ordinance and stuff of that nature.
Well, here's a hypothetical question. One or two, a brother, sister, husband, wife, one to one at the same time.
Well, right now, there's nothing that says that they can't. So it's a big, look, can I tell you, it's a big possibility. It's a big, big possibility that a mom and son or mom and daughter can decide to run at the same time, and if they're strong candidates, then do you really think that they're going to vote against each other? I kind of seriously doubt that. I mean, I know this is just me speculating, but you have to be prepared for that. So that might be some, oh.
Change.
Yes, if you change it, then you got it.
You would have to change it because, I mean, that's, say, in our next election, we have three positions open, and in two of the positions, you have a husband and wife or two sisters or two brothers running, and obviously, they're both going to bring in the same votes if everybody's for the both of them, so you're, oh, you're going to have two siblings sitting up there.
Yeah, and then, think about it, then you might even have a cousin.
Yeah.
That the cousin's going to be totally opaque, and you're going to be like this. So that might be something that you guys need to really consider making changes to it. I think that we.
Does that fall under election rules and regulations?
Well, I think under the election code, we had looked at it.
There's nothing under election.
And I think that Mr. Dawson had looked at it in our answer. Sorry, Ed, can I use you as an example? But basically, we had to tell Ed, Ed, there's nothing in the charter, there's nothing in the ordinances that says that your mother can't run, you know? So, you know, whether individuals like it or not, there's nothing there. So that's something that we might have to consider.
When she knows now.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're so funny. Maybe we can, maybe we can put in at least that part now or something.
This is part of the ordinance, so the council has that authority to change that part of the ordinance.
Yes, yes.
I think that we should make the ordinance.
And we need to possibly fix it. It's a 2011, and you want to make some of these ordinances, you want to make them yours, you know? So how do you make them yours? Well, you make your changes, and this is something that needs clarification and needs change. Because if not, just like we discussed, you could have a whole family sitting there on your council.
Well, can we ask you if there's a consensus in the council members here to alter, right, to make those changes that I've already covered?
Yes, yes, we can make those changes, and then we'll ask Monica to put it on, to amend this ordinance, and then we'll put it on the agenda with the changes that you guys want to make on there. Okay? And y'all think about it, y'all can send me notes, and then we'll get them all together, and then we'll send them to you, Monica, and I'll fix it up. Okay, from that point, I'm going to go ahead and move on to 31.24. Is that okay with everybody? This is a complaint process, and unfortunately, it's 31.24.
In the front part here?
Yes, you're still in the front part. Okay. And this is something that I think that has been kind of shocking or enlightening to people because I think everybody's always heard of agreements, you know, agreements and stuff of that nature. But what you have in this ordinance is something entitled the complaint process, and once again, I want us to become familiar with it, but not too familiar with it. Okay? So subsection A talks about filing, and then number one, it says, "Any person who believes that there has been a violation of this subchapter may file a sworn complaint." Okay? Sworn means that it is going to be notarized, and after we finish, this section will go on to, there's another section that I have a proposed new complaint form, and that's going to alleviate your worries about, oh my God, how am I going to square to this complaint? Because that new form is going to have it outlined in there for you. So that's going to be something that I want you to consider as well, that's towards the end. Says, "A complaint alleging a violation of this subchapter must meet the requirements of subchapter 8.2 of this section and must be filed with who? With the city secretary. A complaint alleging a violation of this subchapter by the city attorney must also be filed with the person stated in section 31.23D. Complaints should be filed in the manner described period within 90 days of the date of the alleged acts forming the basis of the complaint. Complaints filed more than 90 days after the date of the alleged acts forming the basis of the complaint shall be considered untimely." Okay, so this is really, really important because now you know that it has to be sworn to, okay? You have to file it with the city secretary, and it must describe an act that occurred or an alleged act that occurred within 90 days, okay? And you have to file that with Ms. Monica, okay? And so then I'm going to go to the rest of it because I think the rest of it's going to tell you what happens after you file it. Any questions on that?
So the complaint is council to council, the plaintiff is employee.
Yes, yes, and we actually have a form for the employee with council. That, I think, is already on our website, and then after you guys look at the form that I'm proposing, if y'all like it, then you guys can vote on it, and then I would give it to Monica so then Monica could put it on our website, and that could be on there. Okay? But once again, it's sworn, okay? Gets filed to Monica, and it's regarding an alleged incident that occurred within 90 days.
So if a citizen has a complaint on a city employee or a council member, they can use it as well?
Yes, because in here, it says any person. So that does not only restrict it to city council, it says any person who believes there's been a violation. In case someone says, you know what, Ms. Terry, you were rude and obnoxious and you were just abusive towards me. I'm sorry, let me say that.
No, that's fine.
But let's say that they say that, well, then they would file the complaint. They would get the form and say, well, I'm an individual, I'm a citizen, but yet she was rude to me or whatever, and then you would want to outline the chapter number or the number that's applicable. Okay? Okay, so you guys are good with leaving it at 90 days, within 90 days and stuff of that nature. And if you want to make changes, it's up to you. Number two, it says, "Required contents of a complaint. An ethics complaint must be in writing and under oath and must set forth in simple, concise, and direct statements the following." Okay? The name of the complainant, the street or mailing address, email, and the telephone number of the complainant, the name of the person who allegedly committed the violation, the position or title of the person who allegedly committed the violation, the nature of the alleged violation, including if possible, the specific rule of permission of this subchapter alleged to have been violated, a statement of the facts constituting the alleged violation and the date of which or period of time in which the alleged violation occurred, and must contain the following: documents or other material available to the complainant relevant to the allegation, a list of all documents or other material relevant to the allegation available to the complainant but that are not in the possession of the complainant, including the location of the documents if known, and a list of all documents or other material relevant to the allegation but unavailable to the complainant, including the location of the documents if known, and G, if the complaint is based on information and belief, the complainant shall state the source and basis of the information and belief. So this is the basis. This is the basic that you should include on there. Why? Because you're giving notice to the other individual as to not only your name, your position, or their position, and the allegation that is pending against them. That's all a matter of due process because if anybody was to do that against you, you would want to have that because if not, if you are not given due process and you do not have a listing of any violation or any of the documentation, then how can you defend yourself? Okay? So I think that that needs to stay there. I don't see anything else that needs to be included on there. I think, okay, I read G, so the only other thing that I would possibly suggest, and this is up to you all, there might be complaints that come forward that have no basis whatsoever. Okay? So you guys can decide to make a change on here to basically allow, as you know, the complaint is filed with Monica, right? Well, then you might decide that it's okay for maybe three people to review that to see if there's enough probable cause to go forward, if there's enough documentation, or if it's just a witch hunt, you know? So you could name a couple of people and say, well, I want them to have the opportunity to review it before it goes up to council, so just to avoid just a couple of some craziness, you know? So you could name Mr. Dawson, and you could name two other people, or whatever you decide, or you can name just Mr. Dawson, or you can name Mr. Dawson, myself, and the mayor, you can name Mr. Dawson and Monica, you can name whoever you want. Of course, I would say three persons would be wonderful. Why? Because then, you know, you could have two people vote for, one people against, and if not, you have one for, one against, so name the third person so that you would not have to fall into, well, we didn't have enough votes on it or whatever. But that's a possibility that you might decide that, you know what, we trust these individuals enough that they can review whatever complaint comes forward and make the determination of whether there's enough to go forward or not. So that's up to you all, but put a note on there, and then you guys can discuss it and think about it. Okay? So it's just something that I think that you might want to consider, okay?
So it'd be like a panel, a three panel?
Like a three-panel person before he goes and before we kill more trees and make a lot of copies of everything else. And also because time is of the essence of all of this stuff. You turn in your complaint, then you get a time limit for someone to do a response and a rebuttal, so you could possibly avoid all that if someone looks at your complaint.
But you have to connect to all grievances and complaints.
If you so desire. Okay? So keep that in mind, think about it. I think it's a good thing, but it's up to y'all. No matter what, it's up to y'all. Like I said, y'all are in charge, y'all are the king, king and queen of the castle. You make those decisions. It's just a suggestion.
And the other thing is too, if it's a frivolous complaint or frivolous grievance, and it's apparent, and the people can vote, say, you know, this is not going anywhere, and it's dropped right then.
Yes. And of course, there might be, there might be a lot of angry people, but what do you think, Marissa?
I'm thinking that when someone files a complaint, thinking about, like, if they file a complaint against a council member, if it's somebody from the community, it's not for the list events, so not having it go to council, in my mind, would be a bigger So not having it go to council, in my mind, would be a bigger mess because you would have upset citizens because they want to be heard and in their mind, this is something of value, which is why they're even going forward and filing the complaint to begin with, as opposed to just coming to public comment and saying something. So when it doesn't go to council, then they feel like they're not being heard.
Yeah.
And it's our duty to.
To hear them.
To hear them. I mean, Terry, you're always supposed to, that there are bosses, so, you know?
Well, let me tell you.
Well, that's, that's a little bit.
That's a really good thing too.
I don't know because.
Cause you want them to feel that they've been listened to.
If someone's making a decision, who is not what, like if I'm the citizen, my intent is I'm filing this because I want council to know about this, I want them to hear what happened, this is my point of view, they need to make a decision.
Yeah.
And then it goes to another party and they say, "Well, that hasn't bearing on anything, so it's not going to council."
Yeah.
And I agree with you on that point and I think maybe there should be a distinction on that. So if it's like, uh, if it's like city, you know, if it's city employees or, or council or board members, we could do that three-panel thing because a lot, sometimes there's some pettiness that goes on, but the citizen, we should respect.
Always.
Always, number one.
Yeah, if it's against, if it's against a city employee, that goes to Ms. Dawson. Like we have nothing to do with complaints against city employees.
Yeah, yes, you're correct. The one that we will have is if it's a, a city employee against a, a city council.
I'm just thinking, specifically against council or a board member.
And, and for assurance purposes.
No, I agree with you.
The new, the new form that we're gonna have actually is gonna tell you, uh, just real quickly, it says, "No, filing a complaint that falsely accuses someone of a violation of the ethics code may result in criminal prosecution or the sanctions of anyone who knowingly makes a false accusation." So I think that that will also, that's gonna be a protection as well, that hey, you gotta take heed of what you're doing because if it's totally false, then there's serious things that could happen, okay? Yeah. So that would possibly cover that too. And that was a really, really good point, cause you never want the citizens to think that they're not being listened to.
I don't imagine if we had, though, I mean, I agree, I agree on both. Though I imagine if we did put a panel, we would pick three people that we trust to not, you know?
Well, my thing on it is if, if you're gonna put a panel together and you have something that involves a city employee, then you have to automatically sit your city manager there because he's the one in charge of the city employee.
Right.
If it involves a council member, you're gonna have to put your city attorney on there because she's the one that.
Yeah.
You know, advises you on your legal stuff. So then, really it's just those two. Your third person.
It should be somebody to make sure it's not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily a good idea to put somebody from the council on it, um, and only because.
Yeah.
You know, you're there for two years and they go, then you gotta put somebody else on it, you know? You're gonna, it's kind of like the audit committee, you're gonna constantly be putting people on, you know?
If you're ready, somebody that may really get charged.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, HR might be a good idea.
Those are all thoughts.
I mean, it's, I agree, it's not, it's not necessary, it's just another, it's just another kind of boundary, but that, being that it says on there, you know, that they could be criminally prosecuted.
Yeah.
That, uh, that definitely helps to deter the just random, spiteful complaints that you'll probably get.
Yes. And you could, you could get those and it would be awful.
But I, but I do think that the residents should have the form.
Criminal.
Yeah, that they should have the form to come in to, to express their complaints.
Yeah, so I agree.
So then if you do put this panel in place and that, that panel says that it's a false accusation, then does it go forward with criminal prosecution and sanctions?
Well, I think, I think at that point, if that panel says, "You know what, this does not have legitimate or it doesn't have probable cause," that panel could say, "You know what, we're gonna dismiss it. We're gonna dismiss it before it goes forward because if it goes forward, then you possibly it will be discovered that there's false allegations on there." So that might even be saving your skin by saying, "We're not gonna even let it go to first base because you don't have justification other than a witch hunt." And so that kind of saves you from prosecution or anything else or because of that.
No, I'm not talking about us per se, I'm talking about the person that's filing it.
The complainant, yeah, yeah. And, and it would be the person realizing, "Hey, this is something that's sworn to and I, when, when I swear to something, I sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God." And that's what I swear to. So that's what we're gonna expect them to do, right? But let's say, Marissa, that we, that we see something that comes forward and says, "Well, you know, uh, Marissa has green hair and because she has green hair, she scares the living daylights out of me and I feel threatened because of her green hair," or something to that effect. That's just ludicrous. We all know you don't have green hair and you're not going around scaring people. So if that's something that came in and says, "And because of that, I can continue working," well, we know, okay, wait a minute, this is something that's possibly, that's private and you're just mad at her for some reason and this is not a true ethical violation. You know, you're not talking about abusive behavior, language, or being disrespectful or threatening, you're just kind of doing that on your own, then possibly something like that would fall into, you know what?
Dismissed.
This is just, this is just something that should be dismissed because this is pretty ridiculous and we know that it's just pretty bad.
But then if the person wants to pursue it because they're offended, you know, with all this PC stuff that goes on and they're trying to prove, you know, that the green hair offends her and she's had to take pills for it or whatnot and prove that it was all bogus, she could be held criminally liable for that.
For that.
Can you reread that part about them being, you know, they could be?
Yes. The new form that we're proposing is gonna indicate, because I know that everybody has said, "Okay, well, what do we mean about an affidavit and stuff of that nature?" Because that's something that is in the ordinance, you know, but didn't have a form to that. Okay, it says, "Filing a complaint that falsely accuses someone of a violation of the ethic code may result in a terminal prosecution or sanctions of anyone who knowingly makes a false accusation."
Okay, so my question is, who decides whether it's false or not? If we don't have, well, if we don't have a panel, who decides? The council?
The council will decide.
Cause what if you have a council?
Yeah, the council with their attorney will make that decision.
What if the council just decides, oh, we're, I mean, future council, you know, let's just forget about all of us, but we're, you know, this is gonna be with them for, for years and years. Look at how long it's been since we changed it, right?
Yeah.
So, um, what if the council is all, you know, five minds thinking alike and they're like, "Oh, you're gonna make a complaint against us, we'll file charges on you" or something. You don't really wanna put that ultimate power without that panel or without somebody kind of to.
Like a buffer.
A buffer, exactly.
Well, the good thing about no, or, or putting it on there is that it's gonna make someone really think about what they're doing, okay? And to me, having that is a protection for everybody, even for themselves, okay? And also because you're swearing to it, you know, once again, to me, if you swear to it, you know, and stuff of that nature, it means something. So you want them to be aware of the fact that, you know what, it's not just a little blank form that you put your name and address, that's not the worry about. Because people are really affected by complaints, you know what I mean? They could put something that could ruin you, they could put something that puts you in a bad light, a false light, and to get over that, possibly it would take a lifetime, you know? So you want people to realize, "Hey, we're not just gonna let you come in and attack people, you have to have a basis for it and if not, it's not justified." That's my biggest fear.
I guess I see it on the other side of, you know, yeah, I'll fill this out and I'll get another reading signet and I'll swear by it. And if you say that it's, you know, has no reason, okay, so what? You're not gonna do anything. And then I can do this again.
Well, I would hope at that point, if it becomes over and over and over again, if it goes to a panel and they miss, okay, well, nothing happens, so then I can completely drop the house and be done. Yeah. And, and it's all, and, and it's really, it's hard when you're a public figure because everybody expects you to have a real tough skin and just take whatever people dish at you, but it's also wrong when they start slandering you and everything else.
It's about natural consequences.
Yes.
So if we say, you know, this is something that could happen, if you do this.
Yeah.
Then it's something that should happen.
Yes, yeah. And that's something that.
Not to say that this is something that could happen, but won't have really, excuse you, wouldn't really follow through with it, if we're saying it's there.
So what happens, say, you have an employee file the grievance against a council member and the city manager notifies the employee and says, "Hey, there's really nothing there, we're not gonna go forward with it." But the employee insists on going forward with it.
Right.
So then do we just present it to council?
Well, you can put on here with, amend your ordinance to say whether yay or nay.
You can use a structure.
You can put on your ordinance, Monica, whether to go forward or not allow us to go forward, but also for that individual to realize, "Hey, you also know that it does tell you that if it's based on false information, you know, that it's not gonna be good for you," you know?
So I think if the, I would say if the employee is going against what he's advised, then I would have them sign another form stating that, "Hey, if this is false or it happens to be false, you know, this is what can happen."
Yeah. I think that's something, Monica, that we should add to it, that's a really, really good deal, just to protect everybody. And, and that would also acknowledge that the employee has been given, uh, has been given a response and told, "Hey, this is not good," that they're still saying, "No, I still wanted to go forward."
Yeah.
And then we have to decide what happens at that point.
Okay. In a situation like that, may I ask, if it's a false complaint and they, and they make a false allegation against you and you know that it's slander or liable, then you have, you have an avenue to go after that individual who made that false complaint.
Yes, yes.
So then the next question is, if we have to go down that route, who do we file it with? Where does it go to?
You're probably gonna, well, it will go to law enforcement where you'll file your complaint and then after law enforcement, then they'll either tell you, "Yeah, there's enough," or "There's an assault," or "There isn't," or, uh, and then you probably might have to decide at that point if you wanna go ahead and hire counsel to go forward on your private behalf and say, "I'm gonna file a lawsuit against you because hey, you're not leaving me alone." And you're always, you're either threatening me or you're putting false allegations and it's affecting me. Because no matter what, Monica, everybody will be affected by a complaint. You think it won't, but it affects you. It'll, it'll affect you emotionally, that, that's number one, that's gonna be your start. We're gonna say, "What the heck was that all about?" You know, and then it could affect you as a pillar of this society, that people start judging you and say, "Hey, wait a minute, were they really doing that? Is that really true?" And then here comes an election. And what happens? Then you're thinking, "Oh yeah, I've done really good stuff and, you know, I can show the citizens, look, my name is on this plaque and stuff," but yet now they're saying that you're a thief or you're something like that and you're like, then you lose your election.
But it has to be provable.
Yeah, but then you run into that. So no matter what, it does affect you. So you want the person that's doing that complaint to, to realize, "Hey, wait a minute, we take them very, very serious. We take a complaint serious and we're gonna listen to everybody. However, you better make sure that when you swear to this complaint, that you know what you're doing and it's not just frivolous to hurt someone." Because someone could decide, "I don't like you and I'm gonna start filing complaints against you and I don't like Mr. Dawson's tie and because I don't like his tie, now I'm gonna file a complaint against him." And then, hey, then it comes before council and everybody's like, "Hey, wait a minute, well, I'm okay with a tie," but, you know? You don't know, you know? But those are.
I still think you should have a carry mercy on time.
But those are things that we need to just keep in mind and think, do you wanna make those changes? Do you wanna leave it like that? Or what do you think is the process that would be best for the council and for the citizen? We always wanna hear the citizens, you know, and stuff of that nature. So those are just things that I'm throwing out there for you to consider and just keep in mind that those might be changes that need to be done to this ordinance, okay? So number three, it says, "The complainant must be accompanied by an affidavit stating that the information contained in the complaint is either true and correct or that the complainant has good reason to believe and does believe that the facts alleged constitute a violation of this chart, of this, uh, chapter." So once again, we'll look at the complaint form in just a minute and it tells you the wording again, hey, make sure that you know what you're doing. Number four, "Now upon request, the city secretary shall provide information to persons about the requirements of a complaint and the process for filing a complaint." Poor Monica, but yes, if you have questions, she's the person to go to and ask, "Right, Monica, is this gonna be fine or do you need some more?" And stuff of that nature, she's that individual. B, confidentiality and ex parte communications. No city official may reveal information relating to the filing or processing of a complaint except as required for the performance of official duties, okay? All documents relating to a pending complaint are confidential unless they're required to be disclosed under the Texas Public Information Act. Number three, "After a complaint has been filed and during the consideration of a complaint by the council, a member of the council may not communicate directly or indirectly with any party or person about any issue of fact or law regarding the complaint, except at a meeting of the council if such item is properly placed on the agenda in compliance with open meetings law. This provision does not prevent a member of the council from consulting with the city attorney regarding procedures and legal issues." So basically, you can go to Monica, ask her questions and then you can call me and ask me questions as well, okay?
Or email.
Or email us, okay? Notification and number one, "A copy of the complaint which meets the requirements of this section shall be properly forwarded by the city secretary to the mayor, city manager and city attorney and to the person charged in the complaint." So that's telling you that once you have a copy of it and it is, and now we're gonna have a form that hopefully you guys like and can work with or make modifications, then that's gonna be forwarded to those individuals, okay? That's the start of the process, okay? "The person alleged in the complaint to have violated this subchapter shall be provided with a copy of this chapter, inform that, okay, within fourteen days of receipt of the complaint, the person charged may file with the city secretary as sworn response." Okay?
Now will they, excuse me, will they have to fill out the affidavit also and swear to that?
There is, there is a respondents form that is at the very end that has the affidavit attached to it, okay? And that has to be done within fourteen days of receipt of the complaint, okay? You'll file it back with Monica and again, it is sworn to. Failure to file a response does not preclude the city attorney from processing the complaint. A copy of any response to a complaint must be provided by the city secretary to the complainant, who may within seven days respond by sworn writing filed with the city secretary, who shall provide a copy of the sworn writing to the person charged in the complaint. That's the rebuttal. You do yours, it has to be done within ninety days, uh, the alleged incident, you file it with Monica and then Monica will give it to the mayor and will send it to you, it's still confidential. You have fourteen days to do your response, you submit your sworn response to Monica and then after that, uh, the other individual has seven days to do a rebuttal, okay?
And then that goes to the mayor.
And then, yes.
Not that it would, but what happens if the complaint is on the mayor?
So that's something that we should probably address in our amended ordinance because everything is, oh, it goes to the mayor and it goes to, uh, you know, the city manager and city secretary. So possibly we should add for which in there, that if the complaint is on the mayor, then it would go to the mayor pro temp at that point.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so we might have to correct that, okay? "City officials have a duty to cooperate with the city attorney pursuant to this subchapter. All members of the council shall receive copies of the complaint, any documentation in response, in the seven days before any hearing on that matter." Okay? So after all that is said and done, the rebuttal comes in, then Monica gives copies to everybody and then after that, you gotta have a hearing, okay? So we're gonna go into your hearing process. "As soon as reasonably possible, but in no event later than sixty days after receiving a complaint, the council shall conduct a preliminary hearing, which shall be noticed in compliance with applicable open meetings law. The purpose of this preliminary hearing is to determine whether there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation of this subchapter has occurred. If the city official named in the complaint is a member of the city council, that person is precluded from participating in the preliminary hearing." Okay? So we did a hearing a year or so ago, you know? So if you'll remember, basically, uh, the information came before council and, uh, council discussed it and then allowed the parties, uh, to come in and present their case. And then after that, the individuals were told to leave and then council discussed it and decided what they wanted to do, okay? So that basically, what you all ended up doing at your preliminary hearing was, you know what, we're gonna decide that there was enough probable cause, so now that we've determined there's now enough probable cause, we're now moving into, okay, we move on to second base, what are possible sanctions and stuff of that nature, okay?
So what happens when, say, somebody files it against three of the council members? So then you only have two that can participate in hearing?
There's gonna be two that are gonna say whether there's enough probable cause or not enough probable cause.
I'll repeat that again?
Yes.
If it's on council member, council member.
Yeah, because what she basically is saying, what happens if there's three council members that are all included in the complaint? Then it just frees up the only two that don't have a complaint in there against them.
And then the mayor would be the type to-
Yeah, well, the mayor, if it's not against, she'd be there to, to lead it.
Okay, but you can also say, what happens if it's the two council members?
You're hoping that this does not come to pass.
The two council members that are related.
Yeah, yes, again, right? Again, yes, you're right. You're like, oh, my God, but yes, like I said, we wanna be familiar with them, but not so familiar that we're doing it every month that, oh, wow, we're gonna become experts at this. We don't wanna become experts at this.
You wanna make it very rare.
You know what I mean? Because we have more better things to do. Says two, the complainant and the city official named in the complaint have the right of representation by private counsel. That means you can bring in your own private attorney to come in and, and tell him your story or tell him your point of view. Statements at a preliminary hearing shall be under oath, but there shall be no cross-examination or request for persons or evidence issued by the hearing. Basically, mayor, you will tell him, please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, I won't prove nothing but the truth, so help be God. And if the mayor isn't there, then you wouldn't have to do that, okay? Once again, it is under oath and they basically are gonna tell you their allegations. You're not gonna question them or anything, cause it says there will be no cross-examination. They're gonna present their evidence and that's it, okay? Statements, uh, okay. The person filing a complaint shall state the alleged violation in its private narrative form, the testimony or other evidence which are presented to prove the alleged violation is stated in the written complaint, okay? So that's part of the form that's gonna say, hey, fill out what you think is the violation and that's what you wanted to do. Whoever files the complaint, you're gonna ask that they stay on task and tell you, well, this is the complaint, this is the subchapter, or this is the section that I believe has been violated. And then that way you can move forward, okay? Five, the city official named in the complaint shall have the opportunity to respond, but it's not required to attend or make any statement. That means again, your Fifth Amendment right, if they make a statement against you, you have the right. If you don't wanna respond, you don't have to, okay? The official may describe in narrative form the testimony and other evidence presented to disprove the alleged violation. If the official agrees that a violation has occurred, the council may consider the appropriate section and then we'll look at appropriate sections. Only members of the council or the city attorney may question the complaint or the city official named in the complaint. That is kind of, uh, contrary to number three. Because if you'll notice, number three says, hey, you're not gonna cross-examine. You know, you're not gonna request any other things. They're just gonna do their presentation and over here it says, well, the council or the city attorney may question the complaint or the city official named in the complaint. So y'all might decide which one y'all like better, number three or number six, and they make the appropriate changes that needs to be done on that, okay? At the conclusion of the preliminary hearing, one of the following actions shall be taken. If the council does not determine that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation of this subchapter has occurred, the complaint is dismissed. It says shall, so it's mandated. Let's say that the council says, hey, this is just a witch, uh, once again, there's your second protection on that, then it'll say, there's no reasonable grounds to believe that, no, they haven't even outlined the violation or I don't even think it gets near violating that subsection or whatever, then you can just say, you know what, we're gonna dismiss it. B, if the council determines that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation of this subchapter has occurred, it will schedule a final hearing. If the city official has agreed that a violation has occurred, the council may proceed to determine appropriate sanction. And that's actually what happened last time. There was a preliminary hearing and thereafter moved into, okay, let's finalize this and then moved into sanctions. Final hearing, a final hearing shall be held as expeditiously as possible following the determination and that's what we did last time. It was done pretty fast. That there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation of this section has occurred, that will be your finding, but in no event shall they be held more than thirty days after said determination. The council may grant two postponements not to exceed fifteen days each upon the request of the city official named in the complaint or the complaining party. Let's say you tell the complaining party, we find that there's enough probable cause, that's what we're, that's our finding of our preliminary hearing. There is reason, we do believe that there was a violation of one of the subsections that you found underlying there. Well, at that time, you guys go into your final hearing right away and get it done, or you can postpone it. And that other person might decide, well, I don't wanna go forward, you know, I wanna wait. They could, so basically this gives you an avenue and it says, well, we can continue it, you know? But that's up to you. If you wanna do it a different way, once again, this is your ordinance, you can change it. So that's something you might wanna make changes or you decide on that, okay? Sometimes you wanna nip it in the bud and get rid of it that night instead of having linger and lingering under. So just think about number one. Number two, if a complaint proceeds to a final hearing, the council may request witnesses to attend and testify. Administer oaths and affirmations, take evidence and request a production of books, paper, records, or other evidence needed for the performance of the council's duties or exercise of its power, including its powers of investigation. So if you find that it's really, really egregious, then you might say, oh, man, that's a really, really bad violation. So, yeah, we might need some witnesses, we might need some additional people, and then you might wanna decide, I wanna postpone it. But, uh, hopefully it will not come to that, you know? Because I think then you start getting into really serious issues and then you get into the possibility that it labors and people continue to get madder and madder and then come up with private attorneys and they're evil. Okay, so it says, the issue at a final hearing is whether a violation of this, of this subchapter has occurred. The council shall make its determination based on the evidence in the record, okay? All witnesses shall make their statements under oath. If the council determines that a violation has occurred, it shall state its findings in writing, identify the particular provision of this subchapter which has been violated, and within five working days deliver a copy of the finding to the complainant, the person stating the complaint and the city secretary, okay? So write a letter and say, yeah, we find that there was reasonable cause and we do believe that, that this was a justified complaint and from the evidence and from the witnesses, we believe that this violation occurred, okay? So you get that, give it to Monica and then Monica has it, okay? So then we move on to sanctions because that's what it's gonna tell you about what happens to that complaint and what happens to your determination. Sanction and violation. If the council determines that a violation has occurred, it's gonna consider appropriate sanctions. You may receive additional testimony or statements before considering sanctions, but you're not required to do so. That means you can tell them, hey, we made a finding. Our hearing, this is our preliminary, this is our final hearing, and in our final hearing, we're saying there is a violation, okay? So at that time, you can say, you know what, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna now go into considering the sanctions, sanctions that are applicable and are possible for this sort of complaint, okay? Says if the council determines that a violation had occurred, it may impose the following sanctions. A letter of notification is an appropriate sanction when the violation is clearly unintentional. The letter of notification shall advise the official of any steps to be taken to avoid future violations. Number two, a letter of admonishment is the appropriate sanction when the council finds a violation is minor. A letter of reprimand is the appropriate sanction when the council finds a serious violation has been committed. A letter of censure is the appropriate sanction when the council finds that a statutory violation has occurred or more than one serious violation or repeated serious violation of this subchapter have been committed, okay? So there are three and you would entitle on that, a letter of censure, a letter of reprimand, or basically your letter of admonishment, okay? Copies of all sanctions letters issued by the council under this section shall be filed of record with the city secretary. In addition, when the seriousness of the violation warrants, the city council may suspend or remove from office any official serving in a council-appointed position. So that does not mean you can get rid of each other, okay? You cannot kick him off the island. However, if you feel that one of your committee members or someone on your board has violated that, then that could be ground for your, also say, you know what, we appointed you and because we appointed you, we can get you off, okay? Uh, and, uh, let me see, okay? And then that's basically it, uh, what I have after that. We're gonna move on to our ethics pledge, which is on the next page. And that's basically telling us that you're gonna read chapter thirty-one or that, that you understand it and that you understand that it imposes some restrictions on you. You're gonna also agree to seek advice from the city attorney when necessary, if you have any questions regarding any code of ethics. You agree that you're not gonna violate it, you're gonna part, you already participated in, uh, in the code of ethics treaty where you felt to report any violations of the code of ethics. You understand that any violation of the code of ethics, participation in violation of the code of ethics, and failure to report a violation may result in severe consequences. I ask that you sign it, print it, and then give it to Monica. Okay, then we move on to the juicy stuff. This is a complete form that I want you guys to look at. I think it would serve the purposes and again, like I said, it will be there if you guys approve it, but we don't want it to be so awesome that we wanna use it all the time, okay? But it gives you what you need. It gives you notice, it tells you, hey, uh, you can't just file false reports because we take them seriously. It tells you about the complaint and information, again, what you need to put on there pursuant to our ordinance or declaration and you're gonna say who you file the complaint against, okay? Your description of the complaint, it tells you, hey, please answer it, tell us who, what, when, where, so that we'll know. And if you have a subsection or you have the code section, uh, where you're violating, that there was a violation of that specific ordinance or that specific code, you wanna outline that on there and put it under code violation. And then it tells you, what is your source of evidence? Are you gonna submit documentation? Do you have photocopies or what do you have? Then on third page, it basically tells you, that is your affidavit where you're saying, hey, I'm competent. I understand what I'm doing. I declare under penalty of perjury under the laws of the state of Texas, that the complaint states a violation of the City of Flores Code, that this complaint is not being presented for any improper purpose and the foregoing statements and evidence are true and correct or to the best of my knowledge or supported by credible evidence formed after an inquiry reasonable under the circumstances. I understand that a copy of this complaint will be sent to the mayor, city council members, and to the individual charged in this complaint. All papers and communications relating to a complaint must be treated as confidential law unless required to be made, uh, public by the Public Information Act or any applicable law. That will need to be signed, it's sworn to, there's an area for the notary to swear to it and it says, special note, complaint may only be filed within ninety days of the alleged incident. And it tells you, if you have any questions, please contact the city secretary from eight to five. And when you completely fill out this form, then you submit it to the City of Flores law, okay? So that's for your complaint. So the second form is your, basically your response. Once again, you're also told, hey, you cannot make any false response to any complaint because you could likewise be known to criminal prosecution. And it has your respondent information, it says, this is who I'm responding to. You then address the response and your source of evidence. And again, you have your affidavit that's included in the last page, you have an area for your notary to go ahead and sign it and then it tells you where you submit it, okay? So these are forms that I want you guys to look at, decide what you wanna do, and then get back with me. If that's something that you approve, then I think, Monica, we should probably put it on, uh, the agenda at that point to approve any amendment to that ordinance and to approve any possible forms or any forms that you guys wanna approve on there. Cause once you guys vote on those forms, then I will give them to Monica, the ones that you guys want, and then we'll post them on our website.
And they'll be filling.
And they will be filling, yes.
So we are looking at a regular council meeting next week. I think the agenda is kind of full.
I'm sure it is.
And we have a workshop on Monday and an agenda on the twenty-seventh and we have so far scheduled one meeting in November and one meeting in December.
You guys think about it and then you guys decide. Now you have basically your procedures that are in place, you're aware of them, we gotta follow them, and then you decide what amendments. I think you guys have brought up some really good stuff. It is scary to have a whole bunch of family members on there, so that might be one of the, um, amendments that you made to your ordinance. Um, I think that Marisa brought up some really good stuff also, that when it's a public member that's making a complaint, we always wanna know and we want them to rest to show that it's being listened to. So you guys brought up a whole bunch of good stuff. But this is a starting point and like I said, we need to be aware of it, follow it, but not know it's so good that we, that we have to do it every week or every-
Yeah, you don't wanna bounce off it all the time.
Well, and I guess my only question is not only complaints or change or, or strength, the complaints and the responses, but also some of, uh, the ethics when it comes to, and the form when it comes to council members and employees and vice versa, so that might be in a future meeting.
Yes, I agree. But does anybody have any questions? I thank you for being here and like I said, I think that everybody is there for the right reason. Everybody loves the City of Flores one and citizens and we just need to follow our procedures and then just respect each other. And that's it, amen?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Emily. Anybody have any comments or suggestions before we adjourn?
Well, I would just again like to thank you.
Thank you.
The interview was wonderful. And you notice I even answered real quick.
Well, I'm gonna ask y'all to take some home with y'all, please, cause there's a lot of it there, for the board, please.
It is now seven twenty-four. I will conclude this meeting and with the Astros update in the bottom of the second, the Yankees have won, Astros have not.
Well, there's-